Now begins tonight's meeting of the Planning Commission Committee of the Whole.
Good evening. Welcome to the regular virtual meeting of the City Planning Commission Committee of the Whole. Today is Thursday, March 10th, 2022. For the record, my name is Anisha Marwa, and I am acting Vice President of the Planning Commission right now. This meeting includes remote participation of board members and staff as authorized under Minnesota Statute Section 13D.021 due to the declared local health pandemic. The city will be recording and posting this meeting to the city's website and YouTube channel as a means of increasing public access and transparency. This meeting is public and subject to the Minnesota Open Meeting Law. At this time, I will have the clerk please call the roll. Oh, I will call the meeting to order. Please clerk call the roll to verify the presence of a quorum.
Commissioner Alper.
Present.
Commissioner Baxley.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell. Commissioner Faola.
Here.
Commissioner Ford.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Marwa.
Here.
Commissioner McGuire.
Here.
Commissioner Olson.
Here.
Polly will be absent. Commissioner Rainville.
Present.
That's eight members present.
Great. Let the record reflect a quorum as present. And now we will move on to adopt the agenda for tonight, a copy of which was posted for public access to the city's legislative information management systems, which is available at limbs dot Minneapolis MN.gov. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Commissioner Ford.
I move we adopt the agenda.
Is there a second? Commissioner Olson.
Second.
Great. The motion has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? I see no comment. So with that, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the motion.
Commissioner Alper.
Hi.
Commissioner Baxley.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell. Faola.
Aye.
Commissioner Ford.
Aye.
Commissioner Marwa.
Aye.
Commissioner McGuire.
Aye.
Commissioner Rainville.
Aye.
Commissioner Olson.
Aye.
That's eight yays and zero nays.
That motion passes and the agenda is adopted. Next on the agenda is acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of February 24th, 2022. May I have a motion to accept those minutes? Commissioner Olson.
All moved.
Is there a second? Commissioner McGuire.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on that motion.
Commissioner Alper.
Hi.
Commissioner Baxley.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell. Commissioner Faola.
Aye.
Commissioner Ford.
Aye.
Commissioner McGuire.
Aye. I think you skipped me.
I did. I've been, I was thinking about putting you at the end because you're chairing the meeting and I switched up.
No worries.
My apologies for the confusion. Um, with that, Commissioner Rainville.
Aye.
Commissioner Olson.
Aye.
Commissioner Marwa.
Aye.
That's eight yays and zero nays.
Great. We have four discussion items on our agenda this evening. First up is Lake and Nicolet, Phase One, 3030 Nicolet. Staff is Mailing Smith.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I'll just get my screen shared up here. Okay, so this is located very close to the intersection of Lake Street and Nicolet. It's the southern half of that block near the southwest corner of that intersection. It occupies about 2.6 acres in size. Currently, it is pretty much considered vacant, but it's been operating as kind of a makeshift drive-through since the uprising in May 2020 when the Wells Fargo branch burned down at this location. And so now this is coming in as a phase one of a multi-phase planned unit development. So this development would be concentrated along the east side of, or of the site facing Nicolet Avenue. It would have two curb cut entry points, one in the northeast corner that's intended mostly for the bank, and then the other curb cut is on 31st Street. So the bulk of the building is here. There's also an open kind of plaza seating area along 31st Street. I'm going to zoom in a little bit here so you can see. So Wells Fargo would relocate to a much smaller building at the northeast corner of this site. There would also be residential amenity areas, office, community center, retail spaces, restaurant. There would be a drive-through that is retained in a new location on the site. It would include, it's like three drive-through lanes and one drive-up ATM. And then there's also surface parking here. There is also surface parking proposed off-site. So you see this row of parking. This is actually on the parcel to the north, but they have an agreement and an easement between the two properties. So they would continue using that area for off-site parking as well. And then there's also one level of underground parking serving the building. So, and then this is the rooftop here. So it's a six-story building, and then because of the height of the roof structure, it'd be considered a seven-story building. In the corridor four, built form district, which this is located in, this would be allowed. It's, the four to 15 stories is the requirement in Transit 15. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it says corridor four. I meant Transit 15. And then the exterior materials are two different types of brick, fiber cement panel, and also some metal panel. Here's a rendering of the site looking southwest. You can see the new Wells Fargo. And then overall, the building would contain 110 dwelling units. I believe about 77% of those units would contain between two and four bedrooms, and all of them would be considered affordable. And I will probably leave it at that. I'm going to ask the applicant if they would like to add anything. And I know that there are many people from the applicant team tonight that are present, which is great. I'm not sure, Commissioner Marwa, how long you'd like to allot for them to speak, just given that it's a longer agenda tonight. So I just want to make sure everybody's cognizant of time because we have a long agenda. So I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd ask just the applicant team to kind of highlight the most important components.
I'm sorry. So do we have some time?
Yeah. Yeah. Because we still have time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I'm just going to go quickly through the day. This is a quick history of the site. As you, as Mailing mentioned, this building, like the former building was burned down during the uprising. Demolition started shortly after. And in about a year later, in June of 21, we started a very thorough community engagement process with the community. We had a total of 88 meetings. A lot of this, as I can see, was way outside of the buil- the building itself and the material, materials and looks, but a lot about long-term impact in the community. We received a lot of feedback from the community that informed program, that then informed the building design. And nothing was really directly stated about the building or the looks or the heights or the colors, but definitely a lot of program, desire for programmatic items and even some long-term partnerships with entities that would better the community as a whole. We had two onsite meetings, we called Design Matters, and we really shared some basic information about what is in the minds of a designer when we are doing all those things and why things are the way they are and why, why efficiencies and how the code and zoning plays a role. And we had some, some groups divided up and really coming up with some aspirations that was mostly, it showed up in the, in the form, but a lot of it, again, it kept going back to programs. We, Mailing shared this space, the site plan, but we were really thinking about such a big block, such, it is large, a long 200 and some feet in almost every direction. And we were really working from the perspective of the pedestrians, how do you break this? And also, how do we provide opportunities for, for, for comfort, for familiarity, and for scale that feels like a human scale, not necessarily this big old block that is 200 by 200. And, and we are also thinking about in this side, how do we provide a cross, safe crossing for folks with disabilities? Because before, the bank had this strip of parking as part of the easement. There was their parking. And we provide, we propose that we shift the building down. We have the accessible parking right here, so they can easily walk, safely walk through and into the door, especially with this entrance here. We went through also some conversations about how do we buffer and provide some, some really layers of separation between the speed and fast cars. I don't know if you guys know this corner well, but it is a very fast corner. There's a curve here that folks really turn really fast last minute. And so we're thinking, talking to the city, still nothing is solid, but we are in conversation about creating this layer of parking here and third-hand acting here. So we're really thinking on traffic calming efforts here to separate and also provide a second layer of buffer between fast cars and folks that are likely going to be walking here, sitting in the retail, and even kids using the park. The park, the pocket park was really something that came back from the community engagement a lot. And, and they desired to have a place the kids could play, and all ages could really hang out here, a seating place. You can grab food and come over here. We could have performance happening in, for the whole community. So this is really a community amenity. It's not a residence amenity. And the idea was to put in a place where most eyes could see it from the communities, from the resident side, but also that would be accessible without breaking the streetscape from Nicolet and really making it wide enough of an entrance that is very clear. This is not a resident amenity. This is not a community amenity. Anybody is welcome to come and play here. Another thing we did was to do our best efforts to hide all these lanes for the, for the ATM, for the drive-through. So we, we worked, there was 25 variations of this, trust me. But, and we were really always looking for this. How do we first provide a space that welcomes humans, but then still has all this crossing and all this circulation? So we ended up zoning up the cars and the, really the busy lanes over here. And then we have a buffer again with some paved area, green area, parked cars, and then the humans area over here, the little people and everybody's hangout area down here. So we're, and also the, the way the building shapes, it really hides the not-so-pleasantries part of the, of the drive-through. If you're looking from corner of Lake and Nick, for instance, the drive-through is right here. So you barely see it. It's behind, behind all this mass in here. We shifted this, this, this wing down a little bit to also break that big mass that we are finding here, 220 feet long mass. We shifted down, put a light color in the corner, really to try to play with composition and really the visual sense of things. It's still a long building, but it feels smaller, feels more down-to-earth scale because of the colors and the way we, we broke it up. This is a view from the south looking, looking to the building. So this are the retails, the 31st. And this is what we were saying, we are looking to create this, some kind of buffer here. So then this area is more pleasant for folks. There is, there is the retail, it's going to be likely a restaurant here to be able to sit down and feel comfortable and feel safe. This is the view on 31st, looking at the building, the pocket park right here. Again, even from here, you don't see much of the drive-through. We really tried to wrap it around and have green between this space and the car. So we really trying to, it's there, it's needed. The community needs it. It's very, very highly used by the community. If you think about East African communities, cash business, they deposit cash every day, they go in the car, they have kids. So it is a very needed amenity. But we're trying to make sure it was not on the, like a sore, yeah, really like a eyesore for the project. This is a view that, from that retail shop across the street. This is the residence entrance, and this is the Wells Fargo retail down here. We, the material pile that the meeting already mentioned, brick, metal, fiber cement, two tons of fiber cement.
Thank you. And thank you, Mailing and the applicant. Is there any discussion or comment for this item? Commissioner Alper.
Thanks so much. I'm really excited about this project. First of all, can you hear me? I have this fear. Okay, wonderful. I think adding 110 units with a bank, with commercial on the bottom is really exciting in this area. I used to live a block from here by 35W. And it's also really exciting to see this park space, which is really sorely needed. It's a, it's an area with not a lot of, kind of, I would say, as the Park Board representative to the Planning Commission, that's, I would say, it's one of our park deserts. So it's wonderful to see this pocket park. I have two concerns that I would just like to raise in light of the comprehensive plan. One is the location of the drive-through, and I know that you've been, had many, many iterations of this, but I just want to talk about that briefly. And then also, the amount of parking provided and the trade-off with that, too. So I just, first of all, feel that this pocket park is so important to this community. I know there are going to be lots of kids living in this development, and I'd love to see that, that the people who live in this new development, you know, going along with Policy Nine, open spaces in new development, that we are really encouraging the creation of equitably publicly accessible open plazas, spaces and plazas that connect, you know, that, and to me, this means that these, that these residents, that they deserve, that they're being frankly, I think, sort of short-changed on their quality of life by having a drive-through lane run through the courtyard. And so if there's any way that that could be repositioned along the northern side, I'd really like to push back on that. I think, I think that would be, you know, very important to have that on the north side of the building. And part of why I bring that up is because if Nicolet Avenue is your front yard, you know, don't you deserve a less trafficked space as your backyard? I think, I think the answer is yes. So my last thing that I just was talking about this courtyard, which is lovely, there's, there's a lot of parking around this courtyard, and it really shrinks the usable space. And I just want to note that West 31st Street contains 30 parking spaces, and Nicolet has, I, oh, I'm seeing a head shake, but I thought it did.
No, it actually is signed for no parking on either side. That is the discussions that we're having with the city engineers, because right now, the only areas where on-street parking is allowed within about a one-block radius is on our side of Nicolet and on Blaisdell, both sides. But right now, 31st has no parking on either side. The opposite side of Nicolet has no parking, and Lake Street on either side has no parking. So it's really the dearth of on-street parking is why we have so much off-street parking. But happy to have a further discussion about that.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I would hope, I have no idea what my role is in this, but I would hope that our city engineers would work with the development, because I think, you know, again, that there are going to be a lot of kids in this development. And I'd love to see our on-street parking used to support our businesses. And that's, that's another policy in the comp plan, policy for access to commercial goods and services. So to see that used in a way so that, that this development could, could have that, at least that internal, could, could see the public green space expanded. So those are my thoughts. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great. Commissioner McGuire.
Thank you. I echo what Commissioner Alper said about the, making sure the courtyard is usable. And then the only other comment I had was just a thanks to the applicant for kind of flagging why the bank onsite and the ATM is so important to this community. I don't use cash day-to-day, so in my mind, I'm always wondering, like, why do we continue to need these banks onsite? Because I do everything online. So thanks for adding that cultural note so that I can be aware of that moving forward. So, thank you.
Commissioner Baxley.
Hey there. Thanks, Damaris. Thanks for the presentation. Thanks also for, we don't often see the window into the sort of community engagement and process piece when we get these presentations. So I think, thank you for sharing that. And I do, it is, it is tough to see all that drive-through that circulate. I'm sure you've struggled with that, with the drive-through. And so if it has to be there, I'm wondering, in terms of those surfaces, are these, are they pervious? Are, you know, because they're, are they multi-use? When cars aren't there, can kids play on, you know, my, if we're going to have that aspect in the courtyard, can we think about it, not just for cars, other things? How do we deal with rainwater? Those sorts of things would be, would be lovely to consider as part of that terrific space. And I'm wondering maybe a question, too, when Phase Two happens, does, does any of this circulation or parking change? Or is there more of that? If you could talk a little bit about what happens in Phase Two to the courtyard?
Sure. About the, I can show you very quickly this site. So we do have a intended mix or multi-use for this area here, outside of the, the drive-through lanes. The idea is, we were really, Mailing can testify to this, we had a lot of back and forth with the city because the idea was that we only would have one entrance on 31st, nothing on Nicolet. So this would be our main entrance, which is busy and always cars in and out. So now with the bank being allowed by the city engineers to cut through here and the city planners, then we are hoping that this reserves mostly for residents coming in and out, which is sometimes of the day, not all day long, and also folks for the retail, supporting the retail. Because like Faith was saying, we have retail here, and this is another very nice asset of this project, which is, is really local businesses are actually buying that side, that, that slice of the first floor as condominium, it's being condominiumed out, so they can actually own a piece of the building. They have something else that came from the community engagement. And, and we can't expect them to succeed without parking. So we are struggling with this. We need to provide a parking to sustain this. We also need to provide a safety in a safe and a usable space for the kids and the residents and the community. So yeah, we have this attempt of overlapping. We don't, we can't tell, what if this is always full? Because there's a nice restaurant here in the corner. What is, you know, so that is a desire. And I think we, between the developer and my, and my team, we, we wish too that we do not have to have parking or drive-throughs or entrances for cars and always have humans being, having happy moments. But when we start going against constraints of, of program and real needs, right, to make retail viable, you need to provide parking. As far as second phase goes, I don't think we saw that far faith. We do think that we would have likely another ramp access somewhere around here and expand the, oh, around here, sorry, on the side for the residents underground, somewhere this side. And then we talked, we talked very briefly about crossing this park over and having traffic calming measures here, so folks can really slow down, actually down here. So this becomes an extension. But again, then we need to be very careful with safety to make sure that people really slow down, so there's no accidents and, and the lack of safety for the kids crossing. Because if you see the pavement continue, you don't pay attention. So all of those things are in our minds. But we are, we have a strong desire of extending this to the other side. Do you have anything else, Faith, that I left out?
Yeah, I guess I would just note that, you know, if we do mostly residential in the second phase, then we would probably need, wouldn't need any more parking than just underground. It's really when we start adding more commercial there that, then the parking demand increases. And I think frankly, just a limited amount of parking there might, might end up with mostly residential because of that.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I think the, I mean, in many ways, you don't need a ton of space for really great park. I mean, urban pocket parks are some of the most successful parks we have because of their constraint. And I think sort of territorializing that, preserving it, kind of really reinforcing that would be fantastic. And I think even the commercial space sort of leaking into that, outdoor seating, mixing with that, it's all about activation, right? And so I do see, there's going to be a lot of activity in that courtyard, which will be wonderful.
Thank you. Commissioner Ford.
Thank you. I, two comments. One, I would, I strongly support your desire to change, have the parking change, the on-street parking change on, on 31st. I think the, the no parking on the north side of 31st is really, really a vestige of the old design that was there. And there was, there was a massive drive-in operation coming off of 31st for the bank. And, and so that's, you know, that, I think that's, given your new design, I don't see why they couldn't make that 30, the north side. The south side clearly is, is the bus garage, and that's not going to, not going to change. So I just support that strongly. And I also wanted to just thank you for, it's so difficult, and we so rarely see family-sized housing. And to see three and four-bedroom units is just, it's so heartening. I think it's just terrific.
Thank you, Commissioner Ford. A question from Commissioner Alper.
Yes, real quick. I guess I'm just wondering what opportunities exist or what would need to change, or what pushback you've had from, preventing you from putting the drive-through in a, like, on the periphery of the development on the north side. Thanks.
The circulation, when you think about the circulation of a car in a drive-through, the placement of the driver defines a lot of where the window can be, you know, or where, how the cars have to circulate on the sites. We would need to have access, access and exiting onto Nicolet for that to be all in the north side, which became a big problem because, again, the city was really looking into removing all, all curb cuts on Nicolet. And we, we, we had, we tried, we tried all kinds of ways to go through to place the, but still creates a lot of, it makes the, the area where cars go even longer and even more intrusive into the other spaces when they had to cross so many ways. Also makes it very unsafe for, for cars coming in just to park underground and the drive-through folks crossing over. So to separate that to the north, then we had to have access in and out from Nicolet, which was not advised. The city would like to see mostly exit out, actually just exiting out there. And we are still allowing for entrance, which is not fully, was not ideal. Now, if you all can help us with the politics side of 31st, because I, I know the main thing they pushed back was not that they don't agree. They all agree that it's a much better proposition, even for the traffic calming measures. But there is some long-term planning for 2025 that, that is just, is just saying that there's something that'll happen on 31st. So they don't want to approve anything right now because they don't know, because there's no design. It's just like a mention of it. There's, 31st is going to be revisited for street, for, for a public realm design. And that's, therefore, they don't want us to propose or spend, and the city spend money or us spend money on something that might be totally undone in two, three years.
Does that answer your question, Commissioner Alper? Okay. Thank you. I just have a couple of comments of my own to add to this. I, again, also wanted to reiterate. because Commissioner Baxley mentioned about your process around incorporating community input and how you're actually doing that kind of pocket park for the community. I think that's great. That's the kind of stuff that we keep pushing about, wanting to see kind of concessions for community come out of projects, build environments for everyone, not just, you know, the people living in that exact building, but people who will be walking by that and accessing it. I don't have a problem with the drive-through or the parking. I think, I'm sure you guys have to work on a very big puzzle about trying to fit in these part, these drive-through lanes. We've seen this from when the initial plans were put out and, you know, we've gone through iterations. I think this is, you guys are doing the best you can with, given those circumstances of where those lanes would go. And, you know, I totally agree with, you know, the reality of that there you do need some parking for those commercial spaces, especially in a condoed-out way that people want to make sure that there's, there's parking for them. So, but my, more my comment is on the materials used. Did you go back to the community yet around what the facade kind of looks like? I just don't personally, you know, have a, I don't like fiber cement and the hardy board. I think it, you know, the community probably, I'm just curious what their feedback was on the design itself of the building. I like some of your kind of ways that you've broken up the mess of that building and the scale. But just personally, I think that the design falls a little flat color and scheme-wise. What has been the community feedback on that?
It was very good. We, we, we were, I think we were all very nervous that day that we unveiled the, the design proposition to the community after hanging out for eight, for eight meetings. You better have gotten us, right? And so when we presented, it was very well received. So we are now using hardy board. We are using the fiber, the thick fiber cement panel and brick, two types of brick. And then some accents like we saw with the whites or some two, we have actually, we didn't mention this, but there's two public art, place one, one facing lake, one down in the park. We are thinking about rotations of art pieces there, all ensuing words, nothing on paper or guaranteed. But we are thinking that could rotate the teams, the artists, so we can keep the community really include, include the richness of the diversity in the community, right? It's not just one story, there's not one group. But yeah, the community loved it. And we, we presented on the last two meetings with the presentation back. And we also showed them some kind of progress, how, how we have been going and why the things we changed and why we changed it. So it was very positive. The only negative comment received was it's too much, too dense, too many, too many people, too big of a building. Too many people was not even, was more alluring to, too many, a big, too big building for affordable housing building. Would that be good? And, but that, we kind of understand that concern. But we, the truth is, we need, we need housing for families. We need affordable housing for families, so.
Great. Yeah, I think those design panels you have are great, you know, especially if you can make sure that it's neighborhood artists and it feels very connected to the community of who does those pieces or whether or not they rotate it, at least that they feel very much kind of reflective of who's there and it can be something really cool and unique. That's, I'm a big proponent of making sure that that feels connected back to, back to that same community. Those are all my comments. Are there anything else on this agenda item? I'm not seeing anything. So no, seeing no further discussion, I'll direct the clerk to receive and file this item. All right. Rachel, is that good? We can move on?
Yes, absolutely. Receive and file doesn't require any further action. And we've already established that these will all be receive and file items. So we're all set to go. Thank you so much.
Thank you all. And we'll move on to discussion item number five. So next up is the production mixed-use zoning code text amendment. Staff of this item are Jason Wittenberg, Jim Bull, and Amber Turnquest. Thank you, guys.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Pulling up my presentation here. All right. Is that on your full screen now or is that still? Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
So thank you. I'm Jason Wittenberg, the manager of code development in CPED. I am joined by Amber Turnquest and Jim Bull from our community planning team. We are working on zoning code changes that would implement the production mixed-use policies of Minneapolis 2040. This amendment has not yet been formally introduced by the city council, but we have had conversations with a couple of council members, including Councilmember Rainville. And we expect that the city council will make formal introduction soon for this amendment to get the formal process moving. Between me, Amber, and Jim will cover what production mixed-use is, what research and outreach has been done, and what we're proposing, and what the open questions are that we have for commissioners. So with that, I will turn it over to Amber.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Amber Turnquest. I am a principal city planner with Community Planning in CPED. The map, if you're right, depicts the production mixed-use areas within the city, which allow both production and non-production uses. Residential uses are allowed as a part of a mixed-use buildings that provide production space and must incorporate mitigation strategies to address potential conflicts between existing production uses and new residents. The adaptive reuse of older industrial property is encouraged. In April 2020, a focus group of local developers met on this topic and we heard the following feedback, that there was a desire to locate facilities near the existing workforce and easy access to freeways. That, that financing may present a challenge due to the mix of uses. That nuisances can be limited through market principles. And allowing adjacent buildings rather than vertical, vertical configuration may make these projects more feasible. There are Baltimore, Philadelphia, and San Francisco are three cities that have implemented this type of mixed-use zoning. The industrial mixed-use districts were introduced into the Baltimore code in 2017 to encourage the use of industrial buildings for light industrial use. In Philadelphia, Philadelphia has two mixed-use districts that incorporate industrial uses. Of course, the industrial origin of the city meant that the proximity of residential uses was not uncommon. Urban mixed-use districts in San Francisco allow production, distribution, and repair uses by right with housing permitted but subject to higher affordability requirements.
Thank you, Amber. So for commissioners who have been here for a little while, since Minneapolis 2040 was adopted, you are aware that when, when new residential development has been proposed in production mixed-use areas, that's been a little bit messy about, you know, how much production space is required, what uses should be in that production space. So we're hoping that this, this amendment will bring some certainty to some of those issues and make that process a little cleaner. And these types of standards, of course, will be included in the land use rezoning study that we talk about later tonight. So what we're proposing is that the industrial living overlay district would be the mechanism we'd use to implement this. That is the current district that we use to allow residential uses in, in industrial zoning districts. The industrial living overlay district will likely go away in the future and be replaced by a, a new primary district. But this is what we've got right now to work with. Our proposal is that a requirement to provide production space would be triggered when a 20-unit or more residential building is proposed. We think that anything smaller than that, that the scale of that might make it difficult to work with meaningful production space. We are suggesting that at least 15% of the ground floor space would have to be dedicated to production area. But that could not be smaller than 1,000 or wouldn't be required to be greater than 10,000, excuse me. And just to be clear, the production space could be in a separate building. We have an example where that was recently done later in this presentation. The, we have had a lot of discussion about what uses would qualify as production and Jim will cover that momentarily. We are proposing that these spaces be required to open directly to the outdoors so they're not just kind of a private space for the residents of the building. And along those lines, we envision that there would be situations where there might be an artist community, for example, where the intent of the production space is for residents of the building only. So we would like to offer that opportunity for applicants to request that through the conditional use permit when it's appropriate. But they would have to demonstrate how it's going to be used to facilitate creative production and not just become the, you know, the building's party room, for example. I think with that, I'll turn it over to Jim to talk about what uses would qualify as production space.
Thank you. So as, as Jason, we'd be implementing this mainly through the industrial living overlay and that's applied over the I-1 and I-2. And so we went through the code and looked through the I-1 and I-2 uses and tried to find the, the ones in the use table that would most closely provide, or allow the, I guess allows the better word, allow the production type uses that we thought would, would be the best for meeting the intent of the policy in the comp plan. And so, you know, on the slide here, you can see some of them may not be strictly production and processing, but they relate to some of the things like the arts district in Northeast or other creative type uses. And so art studio, but not an art gallery. So we didn't, we specifically didn't put that in where, you know, somebody would just have a space and put paintings up in it or so forth. But an art studio where art is being made, catering, educational arts center. So that might be something where they're not maybe necessarily producing an actual product, but, but they are producing creativity and thought around arts. Film, video, the food and beverage products and the grain milling. Small-scale grain milling isn't like a huge operation like you see on Hiawatha, but it's, it's, these are types of uses like we have in the food building on, on Marshall Street in, in Northeast. And then there's a section that's, that's really a description called light industrial uses. And I won't go through the whole thing, but it basically says that they're low-impact uses that have little or no noise, odor, vibration, or glare, or little impact on surrounding uses. And so, you know, that would really be the sort of catch-all for any type of production. Like I want to start a little business that makes candles or, or pictures or furniture or, or any of those types of things. That's the category that that type of production falls under. And so when we were looking at the lists of uses and so forth, there probably could have been other ones we could have added to this category. One that we debated a lot was offices. You know, you can think of a fairly creative office-type firm, you know, like architectural or advertising or something that, that maybe is producing something. But then maybe that space would just end up being leased to a insurance agent. And not that there's anything wrong with that, but it's not really what we were trying to get at with providing production and creative space. So we had to sort of balance limiting the amount of uses against the ability to also have leasable spaces. And then one other thing I want to point out, because it's confused a lot of people on staff and everywhere else, but there are still a whole slew of uses like offices and restaurants and so forth that are allowed in the I-1 and I-2. That would be allowed to go in a building. This, this list isn't meant to be exclusive of allowing those things to happen. They certainly can happen. They just can't be counted towards that percentage that is production space. And back to you, Jason, I guess.
Thank you. So I mentioned one recent example. This is the production space that was developed at the Timber and Tyre Project. This is a development that Shaffer Richardson completed last summer on 14th Avenue Northeast between like Central and Quincy. It has a separate building in this case with a little over 5,000 square feet of, of production space. This is exactly the kind of thing that we'd be looking for and an example of where this was done well. We met with Shaffer Richardson about this project and they really emphasized to us that while people really are interested in having these spaces, they are quite difficult to lease. And they, they felt like they provided a space that is quite flexible and includes the types of things that, that would be helpful to facilitate production. And they have leased about half of the space now to a couple of photographers. So they are making progress on, on that front.
When did this open, Jason, that project?
Yeah, I believe that it opened last August. And I think, I think the production space was finished at the same time as the residential space.
Okay, thank you.
So here are some open questions that we have for commissioners. You know, most of the things that we indicated are, are components of the, of the proposed ordinance are, have some, some potential flexibility to them. There's the question of should this apply to just new construction or to reuse of existing buildings as well? We think it probably should apply to all of the above when you're establishing residential uses, either in a new building or in an adaptive reuse situation. One thing that one council member raised for, with us is whether we should consider a replacement component that is stricter when somebody is removing existing sort of industrial or production space from a site versus perhaps more flexibility when developing a vacant lot. That's not something that we have in our proposal right now. The required size of the production area, I mentioned that we're looking at equivalent to 15% of the ground floor. We've gone a little bit back and forth on number smaller than that and a number larger than that and are trying to land at a spot that is practical and meaningful. The residential unit threshold that should trigger production space requirement, as I mentioned, we're, we're proposing 20. And, you know, any feedback about situations where the applicant is seeking to provide the space only for residents of the building? And then the, the production uses that, that Jim mentioned, whether you have any feedback about the, the list of uses that would qualify as production? With that, I think we can open it up for commission discussion questions.
I see Commissioner Rainville had a comment earlier.
Thank you very much. So I, I just want to compliment the staff. First of all, I think you really thought this through. I just have a couple of comments. I, I do think that 15% of the total space on the first level is too low. I, I used to serve on the Northeast Arts District Board. And the concern is that so much of this production space is getting converted into residential. And, and that's, you know, residential is good when the housing crisis. But the arts district succeeds because there is so much production for the artists to go close by. So I, I'm suggesting this might be a little higher, perhaps 20%, not too much higher, but, but make it, make it work. And, and as you said, that Shaffer Richardson project, although they thought that it was going to be hard to lease, they've already leased half of it and they've only been open since August. So the demand is going to be there for, for the use. The other, I'm just looking at my notes here, the other, the other thought I had was the, the list of uses was really, really good. I, I believe Jim Bull covered that, but it was just really well thought out. And I think moving forward, it's good to not have offices as one of those use, just keep it in that production mode. Thank you.
Commissioner Olson.
Thanks. I have a question. So I'm trying to remember, but when we were talking about this a long time ago, we had talked about how industrial space was disappearing quickly and maybe becoming limited. Is that something that is still true? Or what do we think about that?
Jim, did you want to cover that one or?
Well, you know, as long as I've, I've been with the city and Jason, you know, Jason, I've been with the city for 20-some years. It's always, you know, been, yes, there's a concern over the loss of industrial space. But I will say that we did do an industrial employment study and designated certain areas in the city reserved for industrial use. And then, so when we did Minneapolis 2040, those areas were And then, so when we did Minneapolis 2040, those areas were designated in the comp plan as production areas. And then the areas that we're talking about now were listed as production mixed use. So the city's decision, I guess, or the council's decision, our decision was that these areas could be transitional, that they could, that they wouldn't be reserved for exclusively industrial. So I don't know if I'm totally answering your question. I don't have the numbers on how much we're losing, but you know, it kind of depends on who you talk to. I know our business development people are always concerned about the loss of industrial land. Other people think it's, you know, great, great to convert these areas. But we, as a policy matter, tried to preserve certain areas and we designated those production. And then the ones that we felt could, could transition or have a mix are these ones that are on this map in purple. And that this ordinance would apply to. So it wouldn't apply, you wouldn't be able to do this in the areas designated as production, which used to be the old employment districts.
Okay. Yeah, that answers my question. That, I, I was just wondering because I was thinking about the replacement idea. But I guess other than that, I would just say that I would want to make sure that you keep the part saying that the doors or, you know, there needs to be exterior access to the space. I think that's important. And I think it should apply to reuse and new construction.
Thank you.
Next up, we had Commissioner Ford.
Thank you. I, I just want to add that I agree with the, the idea of requiring an outdoor entrance and require exterior entrance and also allowing reuse as one of the, one of the allowable items. My question is, you mentioned that, I think it was a minimum of 20 residential units in, to be, to be fitting into this category. And is, is, would there be a process to make an exception to that? If, you know, something came along and particularly if it was a reuse, it came along and, you know, it's 19 or 18, but it still makes sense. Would that, would there be a procedure that would allow that?
Well,
Because 20 is somewhat arbitrary, you know, very arbitrary.
Right. I mean, we could pick any kind of number that we think is, is practical. You know, as I, I look across kitty corner to me to a 16 unit building, I think, you know, what would it be to, what would it look like to try and fit, you know, a significant amount of production space in, in that building? I, I feel like we will probably want to land on a unit threshold and, and and have that be the number and, and not have it be something that's kind of case by case for the purpose of somebody who's, you know, deciding how much to pay for a piece of property and making it clear what the expectations are about whether production space will be required. So we always will run into the situation of, you know, the, the one under, right? Just like we do for inclusionary zoning of people proposing a residential project that's one below what, what would trigger inclusionary zoning. So I feel like if you, if the commission thinks that 15 to 20 unit buildings are something that should be captured, then maybe we ought to think about a 15 unit threshold. But I totally get your point that we may have some regrets about, about that with the one under situation.
Well, and Jason, I would add though, if I'm, maybe I'm, maybe I was hearing the question a little bit differently. So I don't want to put words in your mouth, Commissioner. But all of these uses that we are saying would count towards production are permitted uses in the industrial districts in the I let. So if a developer wanted to put these uses in the building, there would be nothing that would prohibit it. It's just the, the 20 unit threshold is where we would require it. But, you know, certainly if I was coming in to build a 19 unit building and I wanted to put these, these uses on the first floor, I, I could do it. So this is really more of a requirement than a, than an allowing to happen.
So if, so if I'm building a, a 25 unit housing project in this, in this area, this district, I must have production space.
That's the intent.
Yep. I, I didn't catch that. Okay. Thank you. All right.
I think you, Commissioner Ford, Commissioner Campbell.
Thanks. And I'm brand new to the commission and the committee. So I appreciate your patience with me while I ask a couple of questions. First of all, just a, a thank you to the staff who put this together. I think it's, it's great. My question is, I heard earlier in the presentation about, you know, external entrances and making this truly accessible to people in the community. But then I'm also seeing in the question below, I think it's bullet number five about addressing situations where applicants want the space for residents only. I just wonder if I misunderstood or if you could clarify, you know, what the, the purposes of that external entrance and, and that question that you have down here for us to consider.
Right. Yeah, our, our sort of starting point is that we prefer that this definitely be space that's, that's open to the general public or to people who don't live on the site. But we can think of buildings and envision buildings that are perhaps artist communities, for example, that would function quite well with, with having production space that's used just for that community. So that, we wanted to leave open the opportunity for a developer to request that, that it be used only for onsite residents. But I, I think they would really have to show us what kinds of features they intend to put in that space that would, again, ensure it's not the, the community party room and that it actually is going to be used for some kind of production. But, but we're recognizing that that will be a tricky thing to, to figure out.
I wonder if narrowly defining, to the extent possible, what those possible exceptions might be, would give guidance to developers so that the, the city is not overwhelmed with conditional use permits that fall under the sun, especially if really what we're considering as part of this exception would be artist communities.
Yeah, we will, we can give that some thought about what features might help ensure that.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I had a quick question, sorry, before we jump back to Commissioner Rainville. So one I wanted to understand, kind of, are we, is the goal of this tied back to job creation? So is there kind of economic development measurements around, you know, a number of, in that percentage of floor, there has to be X number of employees or X number of production space? Like, I guess, kind of just wanting to understand when people come up like, why do we have to do this space? And why do we have to, what is that kind of that comp plan goal? Is it around protection of job creation spaces? I mean, I love, obviously I love this idea. This is, you know, bread and butter of what I do day and day. I wrote a whole action plan for NAPA around production, like prevention of these spaces and making sure they don't disappear. But I just want to make sure that we're tying it to, how are we saying what these spaces are used for? You know, is it, is one art studio that's empty all day long and never used? Or, you know, someone who's working on a widget in a huge space, the same thing as having a job creation space? I guess I'm just trying to, I remember we struggled with that with a, one of the developments that had come before us. So I just want to hear your guys' thoughts on that question, and then I have a few others.
Jim, did you want to try that one?
Yeah, I'll try it. You know, I mean, I think the direction was to, to create, to create space that would prevent the loss of these, these uses and jobs and space. But we are not coming, so the, the solution we're coming up with is, is uses and space, not, not employees, not, not a metric that would be you have to create a number of employees. I think you can sort of by proxy maybe do that by, by the, the uses that we, we pick. But yeah, there is always the concern that we'd have an art studio where I lease it, you know, and I go paint there once a week or whatever. And, you know, that's not the same as somebody putting a business in there that's making, I used this example before, but it's all I can think of is candles or whatever. You know, maybe there would be five people in there working all the time doing that. One thing I think though is it's notoriously difficult to come up with a standard that requires a certain number of employees. And I, I know that from my, my work several years ago on the park dedication fee, where we were going to try and base that on numbers of employees and what uses would have what employees. And we just really found that it's, it's from a regulatory code standpoint, it's, it's not, not easily done. So I think we're focusing more on the, the, the uses and the, the size of the space.
So I definitely get that. I guess why I'm kind of tying it together is that this type of space is very hard to finance. I mean, we've seen plans come through and not be able to put this space in, in action, right? Obviously, we really want it. We really want this to be a goal and the space there. But it's very, very hard for developers to figure out financing of space like this. If it's tied to something like EDA funding with, that this is a job creation tool of why the city is implementing this, then there's ways in the, how funding comes through that those things get tied back together. Because basically you need some kind of subset of funding to help offset this, especially if you're going to, because usually it's going to be a little less than market rate to pay for these types of uses, to be able to finance that. I mean, candle making, someone who makes candles from home and goes into a small studio space is not going to be paying market rate for Northeast rents, you know that. And so being able to finance this type of space for a developer, that's why affordable housing with this type of space didn't work for that developer who proposed that plan, is that you can either, you know, if you're doing market rate above and then you're using those offsets to, to offset this. But it's, it's a very complicated way to finance this. And I feel like if there's ways that this can better tie to federal financing initiatives around this kind of job creation or small scale production spaces or light industrial space that is being lost in cities left and right and kind of these movements that are happening around it. Or maybe there's, you know, it's, it's tied to the same goals of what the bid is for the Northeast Arts District. So I just want to make sure that, I love this idea, but I want to make sure that this is able to get implemented and we can keep seeing this happen. And we don't just have developers saying you've made it impossible for us to develop in this area and we're not going to do it. So that's, and I feel like that's what happened at one of the proposals that we saw last year was that they just couldn't, it wasn't working out, right? And that's kind of why this confusion keeps happening is we're basically telling them they have to put below market rate space in the ground floor to keep it for these types of arts and creative users, which I, we build every day at my, in my day job. So I get how, but it takes philanthropy. It takes a ton of money to put those deals together. Most developers don't come with that knowledge or know how to do that. So how do you implement the saying that we want the space to be there to your market rate developer who doesn't have the knowledge of how to do below market rate commercial space? I'm not trying to put you guys on the spot. I'm just trying to say like, what's the real world? How do we really finance this? And my, just from off the top of my head, I would think that it would be tied to job creation. Like what is that? Where would, where could you tie in funding mechanisms? Like the Ford Foundation is not going to come out and support a small scale developer in Minneapolis to build this.
So I think those are good suggestions for us to look into. I don't know if we're prepared to have it, you know, thank you. I appreciate, I mean sincerely, but I'm not sure we have an answer for you right now on that.
Okay.
We'd have to look at it.
I don't mean to, by any means, I'm sorry not to feel like I'm putting you guys on the spot. But I just want to tell you, that's kind of my perspective of, I, I want to see this happen. And I just want to understand if there's, like the examples that you gave from Baltimore and San Francisco, how are, like, what are other examples from those markets of how are they being financed? How are these things really happening? Because I want to understand how that model is working.
And the financing, we didn't really get too down the road on that. But with San Francisco, there's a replacement requirement. There's a definite need for expanding or at least preserving their industrial properties after the dot com boom. They've, they did a production, distribution and repair areas that allowed those residential uses. But for the financing, we'd need to go into a little bit more detail to determine that.
San Francisco has a fund that developers can access if there is something like that because of the, you have to replacement fund or something that you are doing. If you're removing industrial production space and you, you know, put money into a fund and then the next developer who comes in, develops this can access dollars to be able to make that happen. Because I think there's something in here that's missing for me of how this will actually work. And I, I mean, I feel like it could, I mean, I don't know if the city does this, but like have a small focus group of developers of have, you know, Shaffer Richardson who did it and ArtSpace and two other people and kind of sit down and workshop this and be like, we really want this to happen. What do we need to do to strengthen this? Do you guys, did you guys do that or is that something that's happened?
Yes, we did have a focus group, including Shaffer Richardson, the Wellington. And I believe, the last one escapes me, but we did have a focus group and they did mention that financing would be the hardest part of this because of the unusual configuration of mixed use as opposed to the usual commercial and residential with this, with the introduction of production, that that leaves a little bit of uncertainty for financing. And one of the recommendations was to allow separate buildings because the financing would be able to, that that's more understandable when they're looking at financing.
Yeah. Yeah, I wonder, yeah, I mean, I feel like continuing those conversations and continuing to refine this. I think there's, if there's ways that they can, I mean, we're working on a feeding grain building in Loveland, Colorado, that's getting federal funding because we can tie it to job creation. And that's kind of the, the idea that I'm bringing back is that they're giving, the EDAs giving a lot of money to make this production space happen for a nonprofit to keep it below market, to have artists in all these studios because of, only because of that reason, they're giving the money to it. There's not an arts interest. There's a, okay, a job we're losing out of these kind of small production job spaces. And so I just wonder if there's policy we can be bringing in from Minneapolis that's similar to, to that. Or if there's a fund of replacement reserves fund or something that if you are removing this type of space, you have to, don't, you know, put X amount of money into this fund that then helps offset it. Kind of like an affordable housing trust or something, you know, something like that, a production trust fund.
Okay.
Okay. So Commissioner Rainville.
Thank you. So I don't have a degree in financing and I'm not proposing anything per your suggestions. But what I, I will tell you is I have lived in Northeast Minneapolis all my life. I knocked on thousands of doors this summer and the demand for housing is incredible over there. Developers, if we give them clear, concise rules, they will understand how to make it work, just like Shaffer Richardson did. And in the broader context of things, we are in a great, we're at a loss here in America for our, our production and manufacturing jobs. Moving forward to deal with supply chain issues, you're going to see this industrial land become way more valuable for, for industry as well as its original intention. And to have this compromise where it's both industry, production, manufacturing, as well as housing is a way forward for the city to keep its tax base strong and to have the job creation, which has been alluded to. So that's, I, I want to tell you, these developers covet that land in these industrial production areas. That will not be a problem building on there.
Thank you, Commissioner Rainville. Any other questions or any other questions from staff for us? And thank you guys again for working on this. I really love seeing, there's so many cities who are not addressing this issue or not thinking about it or not putting staff people behind it. So really, really thank you guys for really drafting this up and really working on this and making sure that this is something that we have.
Thank you for your questions and feedback.
Great. And with that, seeing no further discussion, I'll direct the clerk to receive and file that item. And we can move on to discussion item number six. And that is, our third item is Electric Vehicle Charging Incentives Zoning Code Text Amendment. And the staff is Joe Bernard.
Good afternoon, I guess, good evening, commissioners at this point. Let me just give you a moment here to get the materials shared. Good afternoon, I guess good evening commissioners at this point. Um let me just give you a moment here to get the materials shared. Okay, is everyone seeing the the slides?
Yep, we can see them.
Great. All right. So I see a lot of um new names and faces here on the planning commission today. So introduce myself. I'm Joe Bernard. I'm a planner and code development team here in CPED um where we're we're primarily on updating the zoning ordinance. The item that I'm bringing to you today is one such update. Um we're bringing an amendment that was introduced by council member Johnson uh that will change, it's intended to change the way that we regulate EV charging infrastructure in our code. As a refresher, um some of you have been here um for a year or more. So will remember that we just recently adopted EV charging requirements this past May in 2021. Those items had an effective enforcement date of January this year. Um and those regulations required chargers and other infrastructure um for most new development as they they provided, most new development that provided parking. However, in conversations recently with our state building official about how to enforce these regulations, um we um it was determined that the requirements that we have in our ordinance are in conflict with the state building code. So generally speaking, municipalities are not allowed to regulate building components and systems in a manner that's more strict or different from the state building code. And our state building official um determined that that's what we were doing here. So in light of this situation, staff has not been enforcing the ordinance that we adopted last year um while we're working to to address the situation. So what we're proposing to do is to convert from a system of requirements in our code to a series of incentives that applicants can choose to pursue. Um so we have a few existing incentive systems in the code and that's what we're going to rely on or we're proposing to rely on. Um the incentive systems in our PUD chapter, the built form chapter and in our site plan review chapter. In addition to that, we're intending to introduce a requirement for surface parking lots. Uh the state building code um doesn't apply to to situations where building is not involved. So let's see here. As a reminder, how our PUD chapter works is to satisfy the requirements for a PUD, an applicant needs to choose from a menu of options and accrue a certain amount of points to get approval for a PUD. Call those items amenities. And so in the PUD chapter, we're suggesting changing the standard for the enclosed parking amenity um to include uh the provision of EV charging infrastructure for anyone pursues that amenity. Uh similarly, in the built form chapter, um we have premiums. So to get an increase in our, your floor area ratio, you can pursue a series of premiums that are listed. Uh again, the enclosed parking um element is there. And so we were suggesting adding the requirement that EV charging be included uh in the projects that pursue the enclosed parking premium. Um the the standard that we're suggesting is that um applicants that that supply are that pursue these these avenues would need to give us five percent of the spaces in their project. Um would need to have level two chargers or greater uh and that they they would additionally need to have ten percent of of uh the spaces uh EV ready. So meaning they'd have the wiring uh and electrical capacity installed. In the uh site plan review chapter, we have a similar structure for approving one to three unit dwellings. So there are a menu of options that applicants choose from to achieve a minimum number of points to get approval for their one to three unit project. Um we're considering a couple of options here. The first would be to amend uh an existing standard that awards points for building a detached garage. So to get those points where we we could change the standard to require a level two charger to get those points. The other approach would be just to introduce a new standard that awards a point for supplying an L two charger anywhere on the property. Um we could adopt both of these. I think at this point, um staff is is leaning towards the second option here of of just awarding a point um for having that charger anywhere on the property. The last element I'll cover here is just that um we're proposing to require charging station uh capable of of level charging, level two charging, excuse me, again for parking areas with twenty or more spaces or in parking areas that that add that add twenty or more spaces. There's a fair amount of policy support uh for this kind of thing in Minneapolis 2040. And we covered that last year when we we adopted these standards as part of the broader parking and TDM text amendment. Um but there there are policies and action steps intended to achieve our goals around climate change resilience and clean environment. So uh we're hoping to bring this item uh back to the full planning commission pretty quickly. In part because we don't want to uh continue to have an unenforceable ordinance on the books, but we we also want to make sure we're capturing um these new projects so with this incentive structure. Um so with that, uh welcome your thoughts. I think in particular, we're curious about the thoughts on the site planner view options that we're considering. Um and with that, happy to support your discussion as needed.
All right, the question from Commissioner Campbell.
Uh thanks for the the report. Could you go back to the two options that you guys are considering? The slide that shows those two. Yeah, this one here. Can you talk about why you wouldn't recommend both?
I think um we're a little leery of, so I don't have the exact percentage for you, but most one to three unit projects get the points for having a detached garage. So um we're a little concerned about um making it ineffectively and across the board requirement to have an a level two charger um in these types of projects. Um and uh I think allowing for the flexibility um to put a charger in another place on the property is something that we're interested in and and making sure that we're encouraging folks to do it, whether or not they they move forward with a detached garage as part of it too.
So let me say back what I heard and make sure I understand it correctly.
Yeah.
Is that um you don't want to decentivize people from putting a charging station in if they do not receive an incentive elsewhere. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. I just, I my personal opinion on this topic is the more incentives, the better. Um and the the more options we give people to earn incentives to put in charging stations, the the better off we are. If you guys have data or studies that show that it would decentivize people, then I think that changes the conversation, but that would be my point of view. Make this as as incentivizing as possible for people to want to partake in it.
Great, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from the commission? Commissioner Rainville?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Say, I'm just curious, uh do you have any provisions at all if a building is remodeled? And I'm going to give you the example I'm thinking of. The the old North Star Hotel is going through this massive tens and tens of millions of dollars remodel. It has a huge parking ramp in there. Uh is there any incentives or do you think about having them add additional EV charging stations?
Uh council member Rainville, I think we we clearly would would love to see projects like that provide uh EV charging infrastructure. Um it's been a huge uh challenge um in the city for existing buildings to be able to do that kind of work. It's really cost prohibitive prohibitive to go back and do that work later, which is why we were so focused last year on developing requirements for new construction. You know, what we're, based on our conversations with the state building official, what we're working with here is 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 that we really have to rely on our incentive structures. So if in the case, uh an applicant like the North Star Building, for whatever reason, uh found that their best path forward for approval for doing their renovation project was a planned unit development, yes, then we would have that incentive uh in place. But at this point, we we don't have an across the board option um for projects like that to to consider putting EV charging in. Um they they have to be, would have to be part of one of these existing incentive structures that we've got.
Okay, okay, thank you. But could could you just maybe say that again a tad differently? So you do or you do not have an incentive program?
It's, uh it depends. So if if uh the North Star, uh using that as an example, if the North Star Building, um if their path to approval, um if the best way to get approval for their renovation project was to do a PUD, we would have that, this uh amendment is suggesting that we have incentives in our PUD um uh ordinance that would encourage folks to do EV charging. If if they don't need a PUD, um we have very limited options. Or we, and we're not proposing anything um that would incentivize uh EV charging in a in a case where someone just comes across uh the permit desk and doesn't need any special approvals from the city to do their project.
Okay. Is that because of state, is that because of the state laws or is that just you haven't thought about it? You haven't made any actions?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're feeling a little stuck with uh with the um state law around what we're we're working with with the building code. Um uh I think, you know, if we would have, but to be completely fair and honest here, our ordinance that was in place last year that we adopted would not have triggered um EV charging requirements for renovations either. Um so we're 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 kind of limited with uh remodels in some ways.
Okay, great. So maybe down the road, uh this is just a comment that if the state changed their laws, that would help you here in Minneapolis, the building codes.
Yeah, and I I think we're hopeful that um and we've talked with um other departments in the city about um this issue that we're facing. And I I think everyone's interested in working with the state to come up with a solution to to this problem. We're not the only city that's in this situation, so.
Yeah. Well, I'll be happy to support that in the RGR level, so let me know what I can do to help and thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Great, thank you.
Good job.
Sorry, I was muted. Um thank you. Are there any other comments from commissioners at this point? Not seeing any, I will um direct the staff to receive and file that item. Thank you so much, Joe. All right, onwards to our final item today. It's discussion item number seven. Um and this is for the land use rezoning study. Staff for this item is Jason Wittenberg, Janelle White Woodmire and Joe Bernard.
Thank you. I think Joe was pulling up the presentation. There we go. Thank you, Joe. Uh Jason Wittenberg, again, I'm manager of code development. I'm joined by Joe Bernard and Janelle Woodmire, also from the code development team. We are the team focused on revising the zoning code with a particular emphasis on implementation of our comprehensive plan. We are here to provide a very high level overview of the land use rezoning study, which is a key part of the implementation of Minneapolis 2040. We will of course be bringing this project to you for discussion multiple times throughout the course of the study. Uh the regulatory implementation of Minneapolis 2040 is going to be a multi-year ongoing process. Uh in addition to uh the the two other zoning code changes, uh things like the other two zoning code changes that were presented here tonight, there are two major rezoning studies that are part of the implementation of the comp plan. The built form rezoning study mapped overlay districts that generally govern the scale of development uh through standards like dealing with things like heights, uh floor area, lot coverage setbacks, et cetera. Uh that took effect um on January one of 2021. Now broadly speaking, this rezoning study deals with allowed uses, uh which districts, uh which uses are allowed in and what types of development standards they are subject to. Uh next slide, please, Joe. Um a starting point, of course, is that we'll focus on how we can implement goals of the comprehensive plan with the future land use map in the plan already geared toward achieving complete neighborhoods, climate change, resilience, et cetera. Uh just as with previous zoning code work, we are required to bring uh our ordinances into alignment uh with our plans as required again by state statute. Uh and in the process, we are, of course, I was hoping to make the zoning code easier to administer uh with every change that we make and for the code to be more accessible to everyone who utilizes it. Uh next line. So we still have uh misalignment uh between our base zoning and future land use map. This is the biggest issue that we want to address with the rezoning study. Uh we currently have proposed projects that come before the planning commission through the development re- review process that are pursuing applications that would be a lot more straightforward if ours base zoning matched our future land use map. Uh as an example, we have entire corridors that are guided uh corridor four allowing four-story buildings by right and potential potentially up to six-story buildings. But those corridors might still have primary zoning that allows more than, no more than a duplex or a triplex. So we are, uh when those types of rezonings come forward, we're essentially compelled to approve the the rezoning itself, not necessarily compelled to approve the entire project if it doesn't meet site plan review uh rules or other rules. Um but that rezoning is is an extra step um in the in the process right now that the land use rezoning study will will try to rectify. Uh we will also be able to remove the barrier that exists for situations where the future land use map calls for a mix of uses, including commercial uses. But the existing residential zoning on this on a property uh proves difficult uh for an applicant to to rezone to commercial uh because the state requires that when um rezoning from a residential to a commercial district, you obtain consent signatures from a percentage of nearby property owners. So that can be a a big challenge uh right now when somebody is proposing to align their zoning district with our future, what our future land use map calls for. Next slide. Um with the built form rezoning study, uh we had fairly specific guidance related to the scale of of buildings that were appropriate uh for each built form district. So there was a degree to which we didn't have a lot of latitude uh for some aspects of of that ordinance. Uh with the land use policies, we think there's a little bit more work to be done to define some of those details. Uh as an example of that, a couple of the mixed use land land use categories in Minneapolis 2040 suggests that the city will require some kind of retail or commercial activity in the ground floor of new developments. But the plan doesn't um provide clear standards for, you know, what uses should those be? How big should they be? Similar to the discussion that we had earlier about uh production mixed use. Uh so part of this project will require that we create those kinds of standards. Uh so in this case, uh which uses will be allowed or required to to meet those standards and what sizes do they need to be? With that, I'm going to turn it over to Joe Bernard to present the next group of slides.
Thank you, Jason. Um the rest of the slides uh we have, I think we just want to offer everyone a sense of the the issues and the questions that we're thinking about and intending to tackle with the project. And I think the, maybe the biggest one that we're grappling with is how much do we try and work with the existing framework that we have for our zoning code and our zoning districts? Do we start from scratch? And, you know, we're probably going to end up somewhere in between, keeping everything we've got and starting from scratch. But since the built form districts, as an example here, now play the role of defining a lot of the standards that used to distinguish the primary zoning districts from one another, this affords us some flexibility in determining how we're going to use those primary districts moving forward. We, for example, could have an outcome here where we have something like nine residential districts now. We certainly won't need that many moving forward because we have the built form districts doing a lot of the work that the primary districts used to do. So it'll be a new, a new way to administer some of these rules. As we, I think Jason previously mentioned, Minneapolis 2040 calls for some performance measures. We talked about required commercial space and the production space. In some cases, the plan also calls for a distinction in the size of commercial uses that are established, that are allowed by each district. So there's, there's some analysis, basically, that needs to be done here to land on the right numbers. And we're, we're on our, well on our way to doing that work. And we'll be sharing that with you over the next few months as we come up with recommendations. This maybe goes without saying, but a major element of this work will require rewriting our use tables. So those, those tables determine which uses are allowed in which districts and which locations and situations throughout the city. Some kind of guidance in this, on this issue can be found in Minneapolis 2040 and is outlined here. The plan, for example, calls for prohibiting uses in production areas that are not efficient uses of land. So think large swaths of space dedicated to outdoor storage. We want to limit that. We're also going to reevaluate the role of heavy industry in our production areas. We'll, we'll be looking for the right mechanisms for how to do that. And we'll also be looking at how to, for example, allow existing commercial uses in our residential areas to re-tenant without much process or difficulty. And I think the, the last thing here to mention is just that we're looking to simplify our use tables in the code currently. They're in several different districts. You have to we want, message here is that we want to make it easier to navigate the code for staff, for applicants, and for the general public. Similar to the built form work that we've already been through, this, this project is going to require an expansive remapping effort. So at the end of this process, one thing that will be changed is that we're going to have a lot more commercially zoned property. Part of the intent here from Minneapolis 2040 is to create more opportunity for commercial activity in our neighborhoods that need it most, hopefully moving us closer to achieving the goals of complete communities and climate change resilience. Another challenge we're going to face is figuring out how to best support long-term efforts by the park board to acquire land for future park space. This is stuff that's already reflected in the future land use map in Minneapolis 2040. But the, the mechanisms for putting this into zoning can be kind of tricky. And it's a situation where we, we don't want to use zoning to take redevelopment opportunity away from all all property guided for parks in the future, especially if there isn't a public entity that's ready to step forward to acquire the property. So something that we're looking out for and being careful of, and I'm sure we'll discuss more when we bring details forward in the future. With the next few slides, I'll hand it over to Janelle.
Thank you, Joe. So as we look at updating our land use regulations, nonconforming uses is something that we'll look at as well. For the most part, Minneapolis 2040 intends to be more permissive when we look at the uses that are allowed than our existing zoning. It was noted that production uses, in some cases, are going to be an exception. Certain kinds of production uses that don't align with our guidance, our policy guidance. But 2040 doesn't really specifically tell us which uses should go in which land use district. So there are some things to figure out there. And even for types of uses that in the past have received a lot of attention and dishregulation, we don't have real specific guidance for that, example being pawn shops or tobacco stores. So we need to figure out how to treat those and potentially what could become nonconforming or conversely, what could become conforming. So to help with that analysis, we're in the process of completing an extensive survey of existing uses in the city. And this information is going to help us in figuring out how to write our use tables in a way that reflects the guidance from Minneapolis 2040 and also not create a lot of new nonconforming uses. So with a use-based rezoning study, however, we know that there are going to be some new nonconforming uses created. But we do want to just be aware of what those nonconformities will be and make sure that we are not creating any unintended consequences. Next slide, please. We know that the changes to our use-based regulations are going to result in the need to change other elements of the code as well. In some cases, other city ordinances will be affected as well that are outside of the zoning code. So some examples, you know, our base districts are cross-referenced in a number of places. So we'll have to update those as needed to be clear where regulations are going to apply. We expect that we're going to be making updates to our overlay districts, such as in the pedestrian oriented overlay district, where some elements could become redundant. And this might even be an opportunity to retire some of our overlay districts where they just may not be needed anymore. Additionally, there were some built form elements that we temporarily left in the base districts. Just at the time we worked on the built form regulations, it was too complicated to move them. So now we'll be looking at relocating those built form ordinances into the built form overlay chapter. So those all reside together. Another area that we'll be looking at is our sign ordinance, which is tied to our base districts. So that will require attention as well. So those are just some examples. Next slide, please. You know, starting to talk about process, most of the work will be led by the code development team here. But we will need to rely on collaboration with other divisions, work teams, and as needed, other departments. This is a big project. And as far as communications and engagement, we are going to be bringing regular updates on the work to this committee. And we'll be bringing forward topics and questions for discussion and feedback. There's still some details we worked out for our public engagement that we're planning. But there will be opportunities for people to weigh in on the new regulations. We'll have a website that will be for this rezoning study. We'll be hosting virtual public meetings or surveys as needed. There'll be more details to come with that. Just wanted to mention that. Next slide, please. So with the timeline, we are looking towards an adoption of the rezoning study in the first quarter of next year. There's a lot of work to do. We have started the groundwork for the study. Previously mentioned, the existing land use inventory and communications plans are being worked on. We've always also done some research on best practices. So soon, we expect that we'll be able to start drafting some code text and use tables and the maps for this rezoning study that will follow the land use guidance. And once those drafts are available, then we are expecting that that's when we start the public engagement. So I'm sure you've noticed this is going to be a big undertaking. We are, the scope is going to encompass a lot of changes to our zoning code currently. But we are looking forward to working with the Commission on developing the zoning code recommendations to implement this land use guidance. And with that, that's our last slide. We didn't have any specific requests for feedback this time, but I'm sure we can take some if anybody had comments.
Or your feedback. I see a comment from Commissioner Olson.
Thanks. Yeah, just thanks. This is such a big project. Hard to imagine, you know, looking at all of it together, and we just see it in little, small parts. So we certainly recognize how much work you're doing. But I'm very excited to have this done. So it's always confusing, you know, when we've got the competing guidance that we have to consider. So I think this will be great to finish up.
Thank you. Commissioner McGuire with a comment.
Thanks. Yeah, I would echo what Commissioner Olson said. I think it is confusing sometimes when it comes to planning commission, and it's also confusing for me as a resident. And I'm a planner by day and on the planning commission, so I'm really excited. So I can look up some of the ordinances myself. So I guess selfishly, like as a resident of Minneapolis, I would ask that it's like as layman terms as possible, and if we can use pictures to, to like designate yards or setbacks or something like that. I really like when codes have those graphics in there. And that makes it more accessible to more people, too. So, but I don't know if there's other issues with that. So if that's something you guys or you all could look into, that would be really great, and I'm really excited. And I appreciate you all doing it because I know everyone has a love-hate relationship with writing codes. So I appreciate you all know that, like, this is a huge undertaking. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McGuire. Commissioner Campbell?
I just wanted to reiterate what I think you guys have already heard. This just seems like an enormous amount of work, and I want you to know that you've got the support of us as you work through it. It looks remarkable. I think what you've heard from people so far is exactly what I would say, which is that the more simple we can make this for the residents and the business owners in the city, I think the better off we are. So to the extent that that includes pictures, interactive graphics, you know, ways that the public can interact with this online, I think people know a lot about the 2040 plan in concept. They know next to nothing underneath about 30,000 feet. So I think our challenge will be, how do we bridge that gap and make this work actionable to people who will be impacted by it, but just probably don't know about it yet. So thanks again for all your work.
I have a question. It's kind of my, maybe my just knowledge that I don't have that you guys probably know. But will part of this also allow a little bit more for some of those nonconforming uses? Like we've talked about how it's really tough in the city to have food trucks parked places or kind of pop-up commercial spaces and kind of those things given the code that we have here compared to other cities? Is there, is just kind of asking, I'm not really sure how this all works here, but will some of that kind of allow for more? I know there's a lot of, obviously, we don't want pawn shops and certain things, but also I think there's a way to, those nonconforming uses can also be very cool in other ways.
Yeah, a couple of thoughts about that, Commissioner Marwa. First is that during the Minneapolis 2040 process, the staff did a lot of work to identify every parcel that's been historically used as commercial. Then some of those were, were rezoned to residential at, at some point in time. I think, I remember within the past couple of months, you had a pretty contentious situation where somebody was trying to open a restaurant in a former commercial space. And those are the types of, of buildings that we intend to give commercial zoning now because Minneapolis 2040 says we will do that. So in addition to that, we will be pretty significantly expanding the amount of commercial space as guided by the future land use map. And then it is our intent that, that there will be a bit more flexibility with the types of uses that perhaps the scale of, of a use is regulated a little bit more. And the, the actual enumerating every single commercial use in the code might not be a thing anymore. So yeah, I think we're probably headed in the, the direction that you're interested in, in that regard.
Okay, thank you. That's great to hear. Exactly. It can be cost prohibitive to build a commercial space fully, but maybe that vacant corner lot could be activated in a different way that's less expensive for, for a business, too, given those ideas. Thank you all. Are there any other comments from Commissioners? And thank you all again for undertaking this. This is such a, such a huge project. I can only imagine the, the puzzle pieces that you're working on, so to get it all together.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no further discussion, I'll direct the clerk to receive and file that item. That concludes all of our discussion items on this agenda for tonight. Are there any staff updates for this evening?
Yes, just very quickly, let me get my camera on here. I did mention at Planning Commission on Monday that one of the tasks in front of us, now that we have a full complement of Commissioners, is to take nominations for the executive committee. So we are going to add that to the agenda for your next regular meeting. So the bylaws read that we take nominations at one meeting and then vote at the next meeting. So we will have that on the agenda, but come prepared to make nominations. The clerk has also asked that we do that verbally, given that we're in a remote environment, so that can be part of the record. So we will do that at our next meeting. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. With that, we've completed all the items on the agenda for this meeting. I'll ask members and staff if there are any other matters to come before this meeting. All right, seeing none, if not without objection, I will declare this meeting adjourned. Our next Planning Commission meeting will be Monday, March 21, 2022. And our next committee of the whole meeting will be Thursday, March 24, 2022. Thank you, everyone.